I need a fan. Yeah. Okay. And I'm going to call this meeting to order if everyone would stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance. Before we get into the agenda, I would just like to note that it's, we have some sad news on behalf of the county. A correction officer at Lackawanna County Prison, his name was Alfred Temple. He was hired back on November 16th of 2011 and he recently passed away. On behalf of Commissioner Notariani, Commissioner Schermack, and myself, both individually and on behalf of the county, we send our deepest condolences to Mr. Temple's family. Okay, reading and approval of the minutes from Wednesday, May 19th, 2021. So I have a motion to approve those minutes.
So move.
Make a motion.
Do I have a second? Chris?
Yeah, second.
Do I have a second? Okay.
Yes.
On the question, all in favor? Aye. Opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only.
We did not receive any.
Anything, Grace?
No, we did not receive any emails today.
Okay. Resolution 21-0159, approving current payables. Brian?
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County's general fund numbers 322239-323262, inclusive totaling $1,610,955.89. Electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling $129,440.12. Adopted at regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners held on June 2nd, 2021. Madam Commissioner.
Do I have, assuming everybody's had an opportunity to review the payables, do I have a motion to approve them?
Motion.
Do I have a second? On the question, all in favor? Aye. Resolution 21-0143, entering into a letter of engagement with Pima. Brian?
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby enter into a letter of engagement with the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency, Pima, for the next generation 911 services. Adopted at regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 2nd, 2021. Madam Commissioner here to speak upon that is our Director of Emergency Services, Mr. David Hunt.
Morning Commissioners, everybody. Today we are discussing a letter of engagement for the provision of nine, next generation and 911 services. The agreement is between us and Pima, the state, and it is, there is no money associated with this agreement, but it is a seven years, a seven year agreement with Pima on how to deliver 911 calls to the Lackawanna County Comp Center. Presently, we use Verizon with a router system. Supposedly Verizon is going out of business and the state has been looking into this for several years and came up with a solution to use a business called Comtech to deliver our 911 calls to our center. It's a next generation comprehensive call delivery solution based on NINA standards. It's a geo diverse two generation core services, data centers, and includes EZNETs. So it's a, it's a good thing. It's the most modern delivery system. It's an IP-based delivery system to the 911 center. And basically, it's either we, we either agree or we don't agree. And if we don't agree, we're on our own and we have to provide our own delivery system of 911 calls to our center. My recommendation is we sign it and go ahead with Pima, as most other counties, I'm sure, if not all, in the Commonwealth are going to sign on to this system. So it's, and I have sent a letter down and has been reviewed by the solicitor, and I believe that there are no issues here that we're missing.
Does anyone have any questions for Dave? Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0143?
Motion. Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Dave. You're welcome.
Resolution 21-0144. Brian?
Approving the Emergency Management Performance Grant. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve and authorize the grant submission by Lackawanna County Emergency Management to the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency. For the fiscal, federal fiscal year of 2021, Emergency Management Performance Grant Agreement in the amount of $44,263.33. Adopted at regular meeting, Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 2nd, 2021. Here to speak upon that, Madam Commissioners, your acting EMA Director, Mr. Tom Taylor.
How you doing Commissioners, everybody? This is the fiscal year of 2021. It runs from October 1st of 2020 to September 30th, 2021, for the Emergency Management Performance Grant, also known as the EMPG Grant, which pays half of the salary for the Emergency Management Coordinator for Lackawanna County.
Does anybody have any questions for Tom?
Nope.
I believe this is your first Commissioners' meeting.
It is.
Okay, so congratulations on that.
Thanks.
Do I have a motion to approve 21-0144?
I'll make a motion.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Bye, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Resolution 21-0145, approving providers for the Office of Drug and Alcohol. Brian?
Thank you. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the list of inpatient and outpatient treatment and prevention provider agreements for the Department of Human Services Lackawanna Susquehanna's Office of Drug and Alcohol Programs for the fiscal year 2021 through 2022, as attached here too. Adopted at regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 2nd, 2021. Madam Commissioner here to speak upon that is our Director of Drug and Alcohol, Ms. Barb Durkin.
Hi Barb.
Hi, good morning Commissioners. Hope you are all doing well. I'm, as Mr. Jeffers had noted, I'm looking for approval of our 2021-2022 Drug and Alcohol Provider Contracts for both Lackawanna and Susquehanna County. Obviously, we are a jointer, so we need providers for both counties. There's nothing particularly new to the current list of contracts that you do have in front of you. We added in one medication assisted provider in Susquehanna County to the list, just because there was a need there. But the other contracts are ones that we've had in the past that we are continuing. This will allow us obviously to serve the needs of the citizens of both Lackawanna and Susquehanna County who are struggling with the substance use disorder. Happy to entertain any questions, if anyone has any.
Any questions for Barb?
No, not for me.
Do I have a motion to approve 21-0145?
Motion. Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks Barb.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Do.
Resolution 21-0146, approving Office of Youth and Family Services Provider and Professional Agreements. Brian?
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Services Provider and Professional Agreements for the fiscal year 2021 through 2022, as attached here too. Adopted at regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 2nd, 2021. Madam Commissioner here to speak upon that is our Director of Human Services, Mr. William Browning.
Hi Bill.
Morning Commissioners. These contracts are routine contracts that we're simply renewing for the fiscal year beginning July 1st. Provider contracts are generally placement contracts, residential facilities, foster care and foster care agencies. The professional service contracts, again, are just continuations from previous year with just the following exceptions. We have the OSLC Development, which is the firm from Oregon that is going to be providing us with a program to fight the methamphetamine issues that we're facing currently. And the, we have one new translation service, legal language services. The Integrated Justice Information System contract is for the Safe School Program, which coordinates the activities of police child welfare counseling to ensure that we get ahead of school violence and intervene and prevent said school violence. Other than that, the other contracts are just continuations from the previous years.
Does anyone have any questions for Bill?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve 21-0146?
So moved. Second.
On the question, all in favor? Aye. Thanks Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Resolution 21-0147, approving Area Agency on Aging Amendments. Brian?
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging Amendments with the following. TeleSpa, TeleSpa Senior Services, COLTS, and the United Way, as attached. Adopted at regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 2nd, 2021. Madam Commissioner here to speak upon that is the Assistant Administrator for the Area of Agents, Agency of Aging, Ms. Sarah McDonald.
Hi Sarah. Hi, good morning. These programs for the COLTS were just trying to cover costs for the older adults, so they don't have to pay any money to ride the bus. And the ROM program three, the United Way, is a remote older adult monitoring program that does free blood pressure, pulse, blood oxygen, and weight monitoring between, between regular doctor visits, annual doctor visits. And the TeleSpa piece is the Senior Companion Volunteer Program, which is a big, big asset to our community. They make a lot of visits to older adults throughout Lackawanna County.
Does anyone have any questions for Sarah? Do I have a motion to approve 21-0147?
Motion. Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 21-0148. Brian?
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the new participant agreement between Clinical Connect, HIE, and the Lackawanna County Area Agency on Aging, Pike County Area Agency on Aging, and the Wayne County Area Agency on Aging. Adopted at regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 2nd, 2021. Here once again to speak upon this is Ms. McDonald.
So this Clinical Connect contract is a health information exchange that allows us to access emergency room visit information on our clients to help build better care plans for them. We are, we're doing MOUs with Pike and Wayne County because a lot of their residents end up in our nursing homes in Lackawanna County, just because of the rural settings that they're in.
Does anybody have any questions for Sarah?
Oh.
Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0148?
Sure. Motion, second.
On the question, all in favor? Aye. Thank you Sarah. Thank you. Have a good day. Resolution 21-0149, authorizing a grant submission to PCCD. Brian?
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the submission of the Drug Court Pretrial to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for the State Opioid Response Grant in the amount of $196,066. Adopted at regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 2nd, 2021. Madam Commissioner here to speak upon that is our Treatment Court Director, Mary Liz Loftus.
Hi, Mary Liz.
Hi, good morning, everyone. So yes, I'm looking for approval to apply for the 2021 Drug Court Pretrial Diversion Initiative Grant. This is to help fund, we already have a couple grants for Drug Court, but there is none for pretrial currently. So this is going to help more pretrial people than the Drug Court people. It's going to help them with their coinsurance and deductibles for outpatient, any kind of medically assisted treatment, if they need help with housing and bus passes for transportation. We're also looking to have Goodwill meet with some of the pretrial participants for job placement. A lot of them are currently aren't employed, so Goodwill, we work with them for Drug Court, so we're looking to open that up a little bit more to some of the pretrial people, so they have a little bit more employment opportunities. And we are also looking to have the salary covered for a day reporting director for, and she would be meeting with people in both pretrial and in Drug Court. So I don't know if anybody has any questions?
Any questions for, for Mary Liz?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve 21-0149?
Motion. Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 21-0161, approving a local economic revitalization tax property in Covington Township. Brian?
This is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County regarding eligibility under LURDA for property tax exemption for a certain deterioration property located in Covington Township, whereas the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania passed Act 76 of 1977, and known as the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act, LURDA, authorizing local taxing authorities to grant a tax exemption for certain improvements constructed on defined deteriorated properties. And whereas, as set forth in Covington Township, County Covington Township Ordinance 2021-02 enacted on March 22nd, 2021, the township has determined that approximately 86 acres of unimproved land, as more specifically identified in Exhibit A as deteriorated property, and is entitled to 10 years of exemption for municipal real estate property taxes under LURDA following an exemption schedule that was duly adopted as part of the ordinance. And whereas, a meeting was held on May 6th, 2021, the Board of Education of the North Pocono School District adopted Resolution 2-0, 2-2021, providing that the same approximately 86 acres of unimproved land, as more specifically identified as Exhibit A, shall be exempt under LURDA following an exemption schedule for the next 10 years of real estate, real property taxes that would otherwise, whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Lackawanna County acting pursuant to LURDA likewise desire to provide the properties described herein as Exhibit A with a tax exemption as set forth pursuant to LURDA. Now therefore be it resolved that for the next 10 years, beginning on the first day of the first full tax year following the issuance of the new assessment in connection with the completion of the improvements, and such tax exemptions shall continue for a term of 10 years from the date thereof, and shall be exempt from real property taxes that would otherwise be owed to Lackawanna County as a result of the increase in assessment attributed to the cost of such improvements constructed on the aforesaid property. The exemption schedule is follows. Section A, the county has determined that deteriorated property, which is the subject of this ordinance and to which the ordinance pertains, which deteriorated property comprises approximately 86 acres of land, and is more specifically identified in Exhibit, is eligible for a LURDA tax exemption in accordance with the provisions of the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act, 72 PACS, Section 4722. Section B, the county hereby grants a tax exemption. For any request under the terms of the within ordinance pursuant to 72 PS4764726, the improvements of the property shall be exempt from real property taxes as a result of the increase in the tax assessment evaluation for the property attributed to whether or not the assessment eligible for exemption is based upon the actual cost or a maximum cost. The actual amount of taxes exempted shall be in accordance with the schedule of taxes exempted established by the county, consistent with the following limitations. The length of the scheduled taxes shall not exceed 10 years. The schedule of taxes exempted shall stipulate the portion of new construction or improvements to be exempted each year. The exemption from taxes shall be limited to the additional assessment valuation attributable to the actual cost of new construction or improvements to deteriorated property or not in excess of maximum cost per unit established by the county. The application by taxpayers, the taxpayer shall have the obligation to apply for the exemption set forth herein. The effective date, the resolution shall be in full force and effective upon adoption. Adopted at regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 2nd, 2021. Madam Commissioner here to speak upon that is Attorney Brian Stoll.
Hi Brian.
Good morning.
Hi Brian.
Good morning Commissioners. Thank you very much for your attention. Thank you, Mr. Jeffers, for that introduction. We appreciate it. There's, it was a mouthful, but certainly a very important one. We're excited about this project in Covington Township. As we reviewed with the Commissioners and with staff during the work session, we expect that the private capital investment on this site will be in excess of $56 million and will generate about 460 jobs at this particular site. So we're very excited. Joining me this morning as well is Brent Miles from North Point Development. Brent had the opportunity to present to you as well during the work session. So if you have any questions for us, please fire them our way. But we cannot say thank you enough, and we really do value the partnership that we create with the taxing bodies such as the county. It really is the important piece that makes these projects work. So we thank you for your attention and your consideration of the, of the LURDA for this project.
Anyone have any questions for Brian?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve 21-0161?
Motion. Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you Brian.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have 21-0151, designating a Section 504 Coordination and Compliance Officer. Brian?
Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County approves and accepts the designation of a responsible employee through the Section 504 Plan to direct the coordination of efforts to comply with disability discrimination regulations and to issue public notice for the same. Whereas Lackawanna County must comply with Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973 and its implementing regulations and amendments, and will also approve and accept the readoption of grievance procedures, a public notification process, required employee, employment practices, and policies in the transitional plan. And now therefore be it resolved, if the Board of Commissioners authorizes the readoption and implementation of this policy to ensure compliance with the federal and state law. And be it further resolved, that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County do hereby designate the Deputy Director of the Department of Human Resources as the Section 504 Coordinator and Compliance Officer. Adopted at regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 2nd, 2021. Madam Commissioner here to speak upon that is our Director of Economic Development, Ms. Brenda Sacco.
Hey Brenda. Hi. This resolution is part of the annual plans and policies that are required by the CDBG program, and every year we re-adopt. The Section 504 policy requires a designated Section 504 officer that assures there has been no discrimination in providing services based on race, color, national origin, sex, disability, religion, familiar status, age, or ancestry. Does anyone have any questions?
Okay, if there's no questions for Brenda, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0151?
Motion. Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Looks like you're sticking around Brenda. Resolution 21-0152, authorizing the readoption and implementation of the anti-displacement policy. Brian?
Whereas it is the public policy of the County of Lackawanna to promote anti-displacement policy for federal programs receiving funds from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. And whereas the Lackawanna County Department of Economic Development has developed an anti-displacement policy. Now therefore be it resolved, the County of Lackawanna hereby authorizes the readoption and implementation of this plan and policy to ensure compliance with federal and state law. Adopted at regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 2nd, 2021. Madam Commissioner here once again to speak upon this is Director Sacco.
This again is part of the annual plans and policies for our CDBG program, and they must be adopted and/or re-adopted every year. This is the anti-displacement, and it is a plan that speaks to relocation assistance for persons displaced as a result of the use of CDBG funds. Does anyone have any questions?
Okay, if there are no questions, do I have a motion to approve 21-0152?
Motion. Second.
On the question, all in favor? Aye. Okay, Brenda, you're here again. Resolution 21-0153, designating a Fair Housing Officer. Brian?
Whereas in accordance with the Community Development Black Grant Program Regulations, the County of Lackawanna passed a Fair Housing Resolution on April 22nd, 1986, as amended on April 11th, 1989, and read adopted on November 15th, 2017, to provide notice to the public, real estate owners, developers, and builders of their rights and responsibilities under the federal fair housing law, the Pennsylvania Human Relations Act, the Civil Rights Act of 1968 as amended, and local laws and ordinances. And whereas said resolutions provide that Lackawanna County shall assist all persons who feel they have been discriminated against because of race, color, religion, ancestry, national origin, handicap, disability, or familial status, to seek equity under federal and state laws by filing a complaint with the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission and the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Now therefore be it resolved, that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby designate the Labor Compliance Officer of the Lackawanna County Department of Economic Development as Fair Housing Officer of Lackawanna County. Adopted at regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 2nd, 2021. Once again, here is Director Sacco.
Again, this is one of our annual plans and policies for our CDBG program. And the Fair Housing Resolution states that Lackawanna County will comply with the Fair Housing Act, and it also states that Lackawanna County has designated the Labor Compliance Officer as the Fair Housing Officer. Does anyone have any questions?
Okay, if there are no questions, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0153?
Motion. Second.
On the question, all in favor? Aye. Okay, I'm sorry, I got lost there. Resolution 21-0154, amending a grant agreement with Metro Action Incorporated. Brent, Jeff, or Brian?
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby amend the grant agreement that was entered into March 3rd of 2021 with Metro Action Incorporated, a local nonprofit community development financial institution affiliated with the Greater Scranton Chamber of Commerce, 222 Wyoming Avenue, Scranton, PA 18503. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners does hereby approve an additional contribution of Lackawanna County funds in the amount of $141,406 to prove grant assistance to all eligible remaining applicants that were unable to be funded by the initial grant amount of $2,374,844, which will be, which will further provide assistance to subrecipient Lackawanna County Hospitality Industry Businesses Adversely Affected by the COVID-19 Pandemic. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of County of Lackawanna is hereby direct the Director of Planning and Economic Development to sign and authorize all documents related to this grant program. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 2nd, 2021. Madam Commissioner, once again, here is Director Sacco.
In February, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania earmarked $145 million to establish the COVID-19 Hospitality Industry Grant Program to aid hospitality industry businesses adversely affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. Lackawanna County did apply for, and we were awarded $2,374,844 to create the Lackawanna County COVID-19 Hospitality Industry Grant Recovery Program. This resolution states that the county is amending the agreement that was entered into on March 3rd, 2021 with Metro, who did administer this grant program on our behalf. This amendment approves an additional $141,406 to provide grant assistance to all eligible remaining applicants that weren't able to be funded by the initial grant amount. remaining applicants that weren't able to be funded by the initial grant amount of the 2.4 million. In total, Lackawanna County will have assisted 160 small businesses in need with grants up to $25,000. Anyone have any questions?
Brenda, this was just to finish everyone that applied, right? All we did is everybody that applied got help.
Right, we had more applicants than funding, so this resolution is stating we're amending the contract so that we will provide additional funds, which are Lackawanna County funds, so that all eligible eligible applicants that did apply will be funded. So we're funding everyone that was eligible that applied for this program.
Nobody was left out.
No. As long as they were eligible, they were not left out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve 21-0154?
Motion.
Second.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
21-0155 entering into a reimbursement grant agreement with PennDOT. Brian.
It resolve, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a reimbursement agreement with PennDOT and does hereby authorize the Chair of the Board of Commissioners and the Director of Roads and Bridges to approve the electronic reimbursement agreement and require exhibits for the full depth base repair paving and stormwater controls of 1.2 miles of the Stauffer Industrial Park Paving Project Phase 3 in the amount of Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 2nd, 2021. Madam Commissioner, once again, Director Sacco.
This resolution states that Lackawanna County is entering into a reimbursement agreement with PennDOT, and they will provide oversight inspection services, and they will manage construction on behalf of Lackawanna County for the Stauffer Road Paving and Stormwater Improvement Project. Construction on that project is to begin in 2022. Does anyone have any questions?
Brenda, when will this project be finished?
Well, if it is, it'll go out to bid late this year, then it will be awarded, and then it should begin in spring of 2022, so by the fall of 2022, it should be completed.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve 21-0155?
Motion.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 21-0157 entering into a purchase of additional services agreement. Brent, Brian.
It resolve, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County on behalf of the Lackawanna County Workforce Development Board, to hereby enter into a purchase of additional services agreement and award a maximum of $288,508 in transitional assistance for needy families, funding the EQUIS workforce solutions to provide payroll services for young adults enrolled in the Work Experience Program activities. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 2nd, 2021. Madam Commissioner, once again, Director Sacco.
This resolution states that Lackawanna County, again on behalf of the Workforce Development Board, is entering into a purchase of additional services agreement to provide payroll services for approximately 80 young adults who are part of the TANF Work Experience Summer Program. Does anyone have any questions?
If there are no questions, do I have a resolution to approve 21-0157?
Motion. Second.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 21-0160 approving Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program applications. Brian.
Whereas the Board of Commissioners has established the Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program, and whereas the Board of Commissioners is interested in assisting local communities, organizations, and agencies in the revitalization of neighborhoods since they are the foundation for families and community values. And whereas the Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program has been allocated monies from the Lackawanna County Economic Development Initiative to be made available to county municipalities, municipal authorities, and tax-exempt charitable and educational organizations. And whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chair of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign all documents related to these grants, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby allocate funding from the Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program to the following applicants for the following amounts pertaining to: Number 1, American Legion Post 568, furnace repair and security cameras, $5,000. North Scranton Little League Handicap Accessible Playground, $5,000. Lackawanna and Wyoming Valley Railroad Railway Historical Society, infrastructure improvements and storage upgrades, $3,994. Weston Park Baseball Fence and Field Repair, $5,000. Archibald Borough Veterans Monument Park LLC, erection of the Veterans Monument, $5,000. American Legion Post 538 Refrigeration System Replacement, $5,000. Queen City Hose Company number 8 Communication Equipment Upgrade, $5,000. Abington Memorial Post 7069 VFW Furniture Upgrade, $3,157. Borough of Blakely Police Department Technology Upgrade, $5,000. Lackawanna County SWAT Team Technology Upgrade, $4,996. United Community Outreach Helping Hand Food Pantry, Infrastructure Improvement Building Expansion, $5,000. Borough of Musk, Prince Construction at Golden Park, $5,000. Blakely Hose Company number 2 Heat Alarm and Security Camera System, $5,000. Blakely Community Ambulance Heat Alarm and Security System, $5,000. East Side Hose Company number 4 Refrigeration System Upgrade, $5,000. Borough of Archibald Playground Equipment Upgrade, $4,191. Wilson Fire Company number 1 Heat Alarm Security Camera System, $5,000. Waverly Township Fence Replacement, $5,000. Sherwood Youth Association Pavilion Roof Repairs, $5,000. Earl Dumont Park Town Music Fest, $5,000. St. Anthony's Memorial Park Concession Stand Improvements, $5,000. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 2nd, 2021. Once again, Madam Commissioner here to speak upon that is Director Sacco.
This resolution is approving 21 community reinvest projects totaling $101,388 focusing on revitalization and improvements of communities and neighborhoods. This is the 22nd round of the program, and the overall public-private investment since its inception is over $8.9 million. Anyone have any questions?
There are no questions. Do I have a motion to approve 21-0160?
Second.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Brenda, we are getting our money's worth with you today. 21-0158 Appointments to the Workforce Development Board. Brian.
It resolve, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby reappoint the following individuals to the Workforce Development Board with terms to commence July 1st, 2021, and continue through June 30th of 2023. Ms. Melina R. Keery, Program Director of Marywood University, sitting as the mandated Adult Education and Literacy Representative, and Ms. Maureen Taylor, Gistic Administrator of the Office of Vocational Rehabilitation, Borough of Blindness and Visual Services, sitting in as the mandated representative of Title 1 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby appoint the following individual to the Workforce Development Board representing a community-based organization with a term to commence on July 1st, 2021, and continue through June 30th, 2023. Mr. Gary Draven, President and Chief Executive Officer of the United Way of Lackawanna and Wayne Counties. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 2nd, 2021. Madam Commissioner, Ms. Sacco's final resolution of the day.
This resolution states that Lackawanna County is reappointing two individuals and appointing one individual who fulfill mandated representative categories in order to be compliant with the WHOA requirements. And on another note, the Workforce Development Board has been certified by the Pennsylvania Department of Labor and Industry as of May 2021 to be fully compliant.
And Brenda, I received a letter from Shannon Austin, the Executive Director of the PA Office of Vocational Rehabilitation, and she specifically nominated Ms. Maureen Taylor. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions for Brenda? Do I have a motion to approve 21-0158?
Motion.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a motion 21-0150. It's a motion to award the Abington Community Library interior renovations to Raymond &amp; Sons Incorporated, located at 801 Monroe Avenue in Scranton, the lowest most responsible bidder at a cost of $59,300. And we have Mary Garm. Am I seeing that right?
That's right.
Would you like to say anything with regard to this motion?
So, good morning. The Abington Community Library is planning to expand and renovate its kitchen facilities to create a fully functional teaching kitchen. The library then is going to be able to host nutrition and food-related programs for children and teens and adults. The project is supported in part by a grant of $49,150 from the state's Keystone Recreation Park and Conservation Fund, and the grant will underwrite 50% of the overall cost of the project. We received six bids for the construction portion of the project, ranging from $59,300 to $87,975. Our architects, Mike Muller and Chris Chilick from the firm of Fancy Parsley, reviewed the bid from Raymond &amp; Sons. They found it satisfactory, and they recommend that it be accepted.
Does anybody have any questions for Mary?
No.
I'll make that motion to approve 21-0150. Do I have a second?
Second.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, both.
Thank you.
Opportunity for the public to address the board. Anything?
I know, we received no emails today.
Commissioners, other business. I have two things. With regard to the gentleman who passed away that I indicated earlier, L. Temple, I received a text from someone at the Lackawanna County Prison who wanted me to read this. A memorial service will be held at the Scott Municipal Park Pavilion on Saturday, June 5th at 2:00 p.m. Any family and friends are welcome to attend the memorial service to celebrate the amazing life of L. Temple. The address to the park is 279 Commerce Drive, Elephant, PA 18447. And in lieu of flowers, donations can be made to Emily and AJ's College Fund, and it's my understanding Emily and AJ are Mr. Temple's children. Okay. What is this? Okay, the next thing is we have a Pancreatic Cancer Action Network, Purple Stride, and it's a virtual fundraiser on Saturday, June 12th, 2021. There is a selfie station at McDade Park at Pavilion Number 2, which myself and my co-commissioners had an opportunity to visit and see Kyle Savage, who was the Chairman of Purple Pride, and Dan Lamagma, who is the Affiliate Chair, and I believe they are going to be, one of them is going to be on to talk about this. Is that right, Trace?
They're both here. I could let them in now if you're ready.
Hi, Kyle.
Hi.
Hi, Dan.
Good morning, everyone.
So I gave a little introduction, but why don't you talk to me about Purple Pride or Stride? Sorry.
Good morning, Commissioners, everyone on the call. Thank you for having Kyle and I here today. We're excited to be here. I'm Dan Lamagna here today from Lackawanna College, but in my volunteer role as Affiliate Chair for the Purple Stride NEPA Affiliates. We're getting ready to kick off June 12th, our huge Purple Stride event. It's our 10th anniversary, and Kyle's going to dive into the specific details of Purple Stride. I just wanted to share a little bit of facts and information about this deadly disease that we're fighting and waging hope for here in Lackawanna County. Pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest, with only a five-year survival rate of just 10%. We have made strides since I've gotten involved volunteering, watching this organization grow as it's went from a 5% to 10% survival rate. But this year alone, more than 60,000 Americans are going to be diagnosed, and approximately 48,000 will die from this disease. And a big part of it's early detection, and Commissioners allowing us on here today helps create that awareness for early detection. I lost my dad, Tony Lamagna, to this disease in 2002. He's kind of ignoring those signs of fatigue and a little bit of back soreness, and eventually was sent home from work early. He was jaundice, and it just, it opened my eyes, the disease that I wasn't familiar with. And on a mainstream level, we've seen Jeopardy host Alex Trebek, Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg, US Rep. John Lewis, previously Aretha Franklin, Steve Jobs, Patrick Swayze, so many big names died to this disease. And here in Northeast PA, we're making a big difference, and patients and families need us more than ever. Our local affiliate is 81% to our goal of raising $70,000 this year. You know, we gotta catch up with our pre-pandemic goals, and we're working on it. So please get involved. Go to pancan.org nationally to see, you know, how you can get involved near you and find your local chapter, and then here locally, purplestride.org/nepa. You can sign up, join a team, and hear all about this great event, June 12th, that Kyle's going to tell us about.
Hey, Kyle.
Hey, guys, how are you? I appreciate your time this morning, Commissioners, and
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. I think Dan did a great job of touching on the ethos of our organization. We have a very strong team here, and you know, we're up for the challenges of these last couple of years. Normally, at this point in June, we would be logging in last-minute logistics, and we would be preparing to make sure that everything runs smoothly on June 12th. Normally, it would be at the Heritage Trail where we have a turnout of 1,000-plus, and usually at this point, our fundraising is peaking, and usually, you know, we're pushing the $100,000 mark, as Dan said. So, you know, this year, we've had to adapt more than, you know, more than ever. But we still have had that basic goal of doing our part, and as Dan touched on, the early detection factor of it all. You know, we want to make sure that we push a little bit harder than we ever have, we ever had at this point. So some major differences for the event this year is on June 12th, we of course will not be gathering in person at the Heritage Trail. The event will be held virtually on our northeastern Pennsylvania Pancreatic Cancer Action Network Facebook page. Over the past few weeks, we've gathered with all the Commissioners at McDade Park, Mayor at NaOG, and there's also a spot at the University Scranton South Side Complex, which is now Quinn Campus, and there's locations where we've raised banners for the Purple Stride Event, which has allowed our loyal teams, who've just been amazing these last few years of carrying the bulk of the fundraising, gives them an opportunity to gather with their teams and their loved ones to take pictures and videos, where we will be posting on June 12th on our event page.
Can you
Basically, go ahead, I'm sorry, Debbie.
Can you just tell us, once again, if you want to donate, how, where people go?
Absolutely. So our main, our main page is purplestride.org/nepa. On there, you can sign up, and you know, if you'd like to join one of our teams, again, our list of our loyal teams are available on there. Feel free to hop on one of them, and we would all love to have all of you.
On June 12th, we're hoping to have Northeast PA go purple. So hopefully everyone on this call is wearing purple on the 12th, and people can walk, run from wherever they're at, you know, specifically McDade Park, as you welcome us there with a nice big Purple Stride selfie station, and help get the word out and raise money, raise awareness. It all helps.
I believe, Jerry, you had somebody that you had known who died of this disease?
Actually, a couple people. It's a horrific disease. It's awful. And one of my good friends, one of Brian Jefferson's good friends, Jay Saunders, died from it. Jack Archer, childhood friend of mine, you know, instantly, you know, you just, you get it and you die. It's awful. It, you know, it's, it's, you can't imagine, you really can't, you know?
It's undetectable until it's pretty much too late to do anything, is my understanding. So it's really important to raise awareness. I really appreciate Kyle. Raise awareness, um, I really appreciate Kyle and Dan reaching out to me and the, my other, the other Commissioners, um, to bring awareness to this important event, and Jerry, I and Chris will all purchase something purple for June twelfth, I can promise.
Kyle, because, you know, your, your date is June twelfth, uh, and because the COVID, we're, we're over seventy percent vaccinated in Lackawanna County now, uh, is, is there a way you can do something later on during the summer to try to promote it differently than, than that particular days?
Yeah, that's a great point, Commissioner.
Traditional trail, like a, is that what you mean, Jerry?
Yeah, so, you know, something, I mean, you know, again, I understand the, uh, issue with COVID, but, but again, we're, we're over seventy percent now in Lackawanna County, we're, we're leading the state, and, um, is there a way to, you know, do something in person live later on this summer? Um, I, I just, I'm just curious.
Well, Commissioner, uh, we, we do have a continued fundraising approach, it's actually, um, you know, in June twelfth, that's the event day, but it, it's a year long process, you know, and mostly it begins in November, we, we do an event at Pink, uh, at Papa's Pizza, Pizza, uh, at Papa's and, uh, yeah, we raise them, yeah, and, uh, but, you know, it's a great point, and, and in October, when they, when they initially, uh, disclosed to us that they'd be canceling all virtual events, I'm, I'm sorry, the, of, in person events, you know, they made the decision on behalf of the most vulnerable, um, member of our organization, you know, so we're, you know, they, they didn't want to, um, you know, obviously, this is best ca, almost best case scenario, we're at, uh, vaccination wise, so it hasn't, um, the, the Purple Stride per se is probably out of the question, but there is, there'll definitely be opportunities for more, more fundraising in the near future.
Brian, do you have any, uh, thoughts on this at all?
Myself, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I didn't hear, I didn't hear if you said Brian or not. Well, I, I think what, what, what Kyle's getting at is that the organization itself had already, you know, set the date prior to, to us, uh, you know, Lackawanna County getting, uh, our vaccine, I'm sure that they set the date prior to January, um, and for them to, you know, unilaterally just, uh, go, you know, against what the, what the main, um, organization is saying is, is, is gonna be tough for them, but I, I believe that, you know, like, like Kyle's talking about, really, was we get into the, the fall months with, uh, Pizza by Papa's and all that kind of stuff, I, I think that then maybe we can do something on the square, there's no doubt about that, uh, that can coincide with the same day that pizza, uh, the Papa's Pizza is, is giving away something over there, they, that Purple Stride can have a, a booth downtown, uh, on Courthouse Square, they're catty corner from Papa's, that they can, uh, once again, uh, promote, uh, uh, solicitations for contributions. I mean, the really, the reality of it is, is, is what everybody has said here is, is a fact and, and the early detection is the biggest part and the hardest part of, of pancreatic cancer. Um, you know, when Jay went in, he went in for, uh, something with his stomach and, and it was, uh, they, they discovered it by accident and he was able to survive for a couple of years. Um, they, he went in for, I, I can't remember exactly what it was, um, but he was having some problems with his stomach at the time, and when they went in to take a look at, that's when they discovered the, the pancreatic cancer. Had they not done that, you know, he looked just as fit and, and as he always did, and realized that he had this growing inside him, and nobody really does, I mean, I'm sure that Kyle has had his life affected by this, and Dan has talked about his father, you know, early detection is the key, and the more money that we raise, um, the better odds that they'll find some, uh, some testing somewhere in the near future that we can get something as simple as maybe, you know, I always say just a, a quick blood test, but, and the reality of it is these tumors are hidden, uh, down by the, the liver and stuff like that, it's, they're, they're, well, pancreas, pancreas, um, they're tough to find.
Well, Kyle or Dan, if you guys think of something that you want to add to, you know, and need help from the county, um, over the course of the summer, in addition to your virtual event on the twelfth, please reach out to us. Kyle, you have my information and we'll do anything we can to raise awareness for this cause.
Thank you, really appreciate it. We'll definitely check that out with our, our Purple Army locally here and, uh, we're glad to collaborate with everyone on this call, thank you.
Yep.
All right, thank you very much, have a good day.
Thank you, everyone, appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Uh, I, I said two of, two, but Mary Liz faxed something she forgot to, to say, um, it, she's, it's a flyer that she just faxed me, and it says, "Join us to celebrate with the Lackawanna County Treatment Court Team and our participants who had the courage and commitment to change. It's Thursday, June tenth, twenty twenty one, at five P. M. in front of the Lackawanna County Courthouse here on North Washington Avenue in, in Scranton." So if you can get out and support, um, that, uh, that would be great. Anybody else have anything?
We have a, uh, three and, on three basketball, uh, tournament coming again. It, it, it was, it was put off last year. Um, it's August sixth and seventh, the rain date is the eighth. Uh, registration begins, uh, next week and they can go to, uh, lackawanna county dot org to, uh, to begin to register. It's always been a very successful program, it's always been something that's worked out real well in Lackawanna County, people enjoy it. Um, Rick the Terry and Joe D'Renzo basically run it. Uh, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's a good thing and it'll get people downtown and it'll help the community get back to s- some set of sense of normalcy. Uh, but August sixth and seventh, rain date, the eighth, thank you.
Chris, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Man, Commissioner, if, if Commissioner Sherman, this doesn't have anything, I just want to give a quick update on our vaccines and where we are today. As of yesterday, actually, the numbers don't get tallied till eleven twenty. As of yesterday, we have one hundred and twenty two thousand six hundred and fifty five people with one, at least one shot, uh, of our citizens have that, that's seventy one percent. We have one hundred and two thousand and seven that are fully vaccinated, that's fifty nine percent. Our target dates for everyone, uh, and, and those numbers are based on sixteen years and older, obviously, the eighteen years and older, the numbers are even higher, but we're gonna base our numbers on sixteen years and older. Um, um, our target date for full vaccinations of seventy percent is July eleventh, uh, and eighty percent will be at, uh, August seventeenth. So we believe that our, our community will be at, uh, those levels on July eleventh at seventy percent and August seventeenth at eighty percent, and that is sixteen years and above, and that is full vaccinations. So, um, we're just really almost a month away from hitting full vaccination for seventy percent of our citizens. We're over that number now with at least one shot in them.
I, I think that we, uh, all owe Brian Jefferson a, uh, a thank you.
I agree.
Doing a great job he's done.
I, I think, and I appreciate that, that the reality of it is, yes, while we, we organize things here, it's really the, uh, there's, there's three factors here. Number one is Jason Kavulich organizing this. Number two is the actual vaccinators themselves, all the, uh, the pharmacies and the health providers that, that are still doing it to this day, and number three, the residents of this county who have been willing to get the vaccine themselves, and that's really the most important part. Uh, the final note that I have real quick, and I know we have, we have some very small clinics going on all over the place, and those, if that information gets out, uh, but there are two things that I want to remind the citizens of today. Number one, if they go to lackawanna county dot org, they can hit our orange button, and every single, uh, entity that has vaccine, whether it's a pharmacy or a medical provider, is listed i- in our website, and they can go into it, they can click their websites, or they can call and get appointments, uh, and get right in. Um, and number two, we are having a, Jason is also putting together another mass clinic, a, a Center City Clinic down here in the middle of the city of Scranton, for those who can walk to it on June eighteenth at the Cultural Center. Um, the details are still being worked out as of what time it's gonna start, but, uh, we have, in, talked to the Cultural Center and we are going to put that together on Friday, June eighteenth, and that will be everyone within the Center City limits or anybody else that wants to drive downtown and get themselves a vaccine. We'll put more information about that out in the next week, and that's all I have, Commissioners.
Okay. Brian, um, I, I understand, and we do have to thank Jason and all the providers, who, without your coordination, uh, this would not have been possible in Lackawanna County. Thank you.
I agree.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, if there's nothing else, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.